Well, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call toward this Tuesday study session of the Pierce County Council. It is Tuesday, May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. The time is twelve oh two P M. All members are present except for Vice Chair Campbell and Councilmember Herrera, who are both excused. That brings us to item number two, review of today's council meeting agenda. Ms. Long, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you. This is this afternoon's council meeting agenda. It is amended. I will note that there is just one change from what was reviewed yesterday in today's session on your consent agenda. And you'll see the addition of the grant that that was discussed. So we'll start with section seven. There is one proclamation this afternoon, and that is proclaiming May two thousand and twenty-four as Hunger Awareness Month in Pierce County. And that was requested by councilmembers Campbell and Hitchen.
And Councilmember Hitchen, I think we need to ask you to be prepared to present this, please. Thank you.
All right, so we're on section eight resolutions, and first up is our two thousand and twenty-four one fifty-eight S. This is approving certain council-initiated amendment requests and other land use and policy considerations as part of a preferred alternative for the comprehensive plan periodic update. This was forwarded as substituted without recommendation at C D E C on April twenty-ninth. There are a total of fourteen amendments, eight were reviewed yesterday, so the remain and so the remaining six are in your packets, which Mr. Kruger will discuss with you shortly today. Number two is our two thousand and twenty-four one fifty-nine. This is setting the date of an evening District Number Three council meeting that will be on Tuesday, July thirtieth, at six thirty at the Pierce County Skill Center. Under section nine ordinances, you do have one item here, and that is oh two thousand and twenty-four five fifteen. This is vacating a portion of Snellstrom Bush County Road, as we mentioned in study session yesterday, to comply with the duration of the posting requirements. This would need to be continued, and the recommendation is to continue this to May twenty-first, and it will be in compliance. And those are your agenda items for this afternoon's meeting.
So the staff recommendation is that we continue proposal oh two thousand and twenty-four dash five one five?
Right to May twenty-first or later if you prefer.
Can you make sure that's in the script, please? Any questions or comments before we get to briefing on amendments? I don't see any. Let's move to further amendments on the comprehensive plan preferred alternative. Let's remind members, we are not making final actions tonight. We are setting bookends for a study for many more months with lots more public engagement and data to come for council to make decisions later this year. So remind folks of that. So we're less than three hours away from a meeting and getting further really substantive amendments at this late hour is quite frustrating to be able to be able to understand the impacts of amendments and be able to make good decisions and for the public to absorb what's going on, much less councilmembers to be able to absorb what's going on. Especially when folks have been in committee, being able to deliberate in committee and work on policy in a thoughtful way, having amendments at the last minute is frustrating. But, Mr. Kruger, can you brief on the new amendments that have presented themselves?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'll start with amendment number nine. Amendment number nine concerns short-term rental housing. That particular amendment that was considered in in committee included several things to take a look at related to short-term rentals. This amendment would remove some of those items, including consideration of a licensing requirement. So that particular item would be removed from consideration. The minimum thirty-day rental period for short-term rentals that are being accommodated within accessory dwelling units would be removed from consideration. And the the capacity of the short-term rental that's tied to the septic system would be modified so that the capacity would be associated with the presumed monthly capacity of the septic system. So happy to take any questions about that particular change. Thank you.
Mr. Kruger, does any regulatory agency know what the monthly capacity of a septic system is?
Well, we could do the math and add it all up, come up with a with an assumed capacity.
And who would regulate such detail?
Well, the Health Department would. So the Health Department would have to come up with some sort of standard for approving a septic system based upon an assumed maximum use. I think the maker of the amendment, and I can, Councilwoman Kruger can speak to her amendment, but I believe the idea is that if a short-term rental is not being used every day, the capacity shouldn't be limited to the design that was approved for a traditional home, which is, you know, let's say it's a three-bedroom home. The Health Department approves a septic system based upon a certain gallonage, a per-day gallonage based upon the number of bedrooms. It's about a hundred and twenty gallons per person per day is the assumption, I believe. So if you if you were going to be using the building for a short-term rental, let's say, and you would be exceeding that capacity, there may be a need to provide a septic system to accommodate that peak load, and then maybe pump it out slowly over a number of days in order to not overwhelm the system, would be my way of thinking in terms of how you could accommodate that the intent. But this is kind of new territory. Septic systems are designed based upon a per-day maximum load. That's how it works right now.
Thank you, Councilmember Kruger.
Thank you, Chair. The fact of it having trying to base units connected to an onsite septic, I understand that you can have, you can put in any size septic you want. Some accommodate an assumed two-bedroom house, a three-bedroom, four-bedroom. And several years ago, I was knocking on a door, and they were saying, hey, yeah, this this house over here has about fifteen people living in it, and it's a four-bedroom or a three-bedroom, and they're concerned with the septic system. So there's no relationship in code that that you can determine that. Maybe you have a family gathering, maybe you're having a party, maybe you have a family that became homeless, and they're coming to live with you for a while. And so there's different parameters on the septic system. I'm merely trying to look at this in terms of saying you are limited on the number of people based that because you're on a septic when trying to give some leeway here, some encouragement that folks can have their business and not be limited to the number because of a three-day use when over a seven-day period, it may be a less use than on the weekend use. This is, I don't know about how they would determine the flow and gallons on such, but this is looking for a way that folks can maintain their business and not have so much more regulation on them. Thank you, Chair.
There any other questions about amendment nine? Again, getting it at the late hour, it's hard to unpack things, so I'm not sure which of these are able to be supported because we don't understand impacts, but let's keep moving forward. Read amendment number eleven.
Thank you, Chair. So amendment number eleven is an amendment to the agricultural tourism policy objective, and what it would do is it would provide additional reference to supporting farmers that are that are involved with that sort of activity. And so it's don't want to call it non-substantive, but it's kind of a, it's kind of showing a policy objective that, you know, the county is going to be supportive of farmers in their in their work.
Thank you. Questions about amendment eleven? Let's go to number twelve.
Amendment number twelve concerns the integration between the Critical Area Regulation and the Shoreline Management Act, and we talked quite a bit about this in committee. There's language in the proposal that indicates that within within the shoreline area, we want to make sure that we don't have a lesser standard that applies to the to the shoreline that would be applying to the upland area, and that's because of the kind of the offset offset timing that the state obligates the county to update its GMA plan and critical areas versus the shoreline master program. And so you have this kind of sequencing that's not aligned in terms of time. What this amendment would do is it would indicate that the standards within shoreline, the shoreline area has to be equal, the protection has to be equal within the shoreline area as the as the upland.
If the best available science indicated that the shoreline should be more protective, that would be inconsistent with this amendment, would it not?
Sure.
Any questions about amendment twelve?
Can you say that again?
The department goes through best available science review to make recommendations about development regulations, and the underlying the underlying language in the underlying proposal says to ensure lands within the jurisdiction of the Shoreline Management Act, so so the shoreline environment, are provided with equal or more protective critical area standards as those lands located outside the shoreline jurisdiction. That's what's in the underlying proposal. If this amendment were adopted and best available science came forward that said that justified more protective critical area standard in the shoreline than in the upland, it would be inconsistent with the policy in the comp plan to have more protective standard in the shoreline. Again, the department makes recommendations based on best available science. And if that best available science came forward that justified more protective, I don't know that it would, but it could. It would be inconsistent with this policy statement as I as I read it, understand it. And, Mr. Kruger, please always correct me.
I would just note that the, I mean, this is not a policy statement. It's just directing the department to include within its E I S the shoreline areas, which to this point have been excluded from the analysis. So council's saying, when you when you when you complete your work with your E I S, include the S M P. As you said, Mr. Chair, the proposal that's embedded into the resolution today says the 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 critical areas within shorelines have to be at equal or greater protection than the upland. This amendment would say is we're keeping it equal within both places. But it's not establishing policy. You know, council is going to be able to do what council wants to do in the fall. This is just directing the department in terms of how to prepare their E I S work.
Thank you. Councilmember Hitchen, did we confuse the matter or did we clarify?
No, I think I've got, thank you.
Councilmember Kruger?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mr. Kruger, on that as well. It just is giving equal thought to it and basically equal time, because some of that is very subjective, because what is more restrictive to some is not as as it is to others. So it's just kind of an equity thing here. Thank you, Chair.
Amendment thirteen.
Thank you. So amendment number thirteen concerns the policy objective that has been discussed quite frequently at council related to the amount of lands that that ought to be protected to provide for carbon sequestration. And so there was the fifty thousand acre discussion, and then there was a one hundred and fifty thousand acre discussion, and at the committee, the committee decided to split the split that amount and come up with a one hundred thousand acre land preservation policy objective. This amendment would eliminate the reference to that particular amount of acreage. And it would, however, it would retain kind of the same policy objective in terms of carbon sequestration and carbon storage. It promotes expanded programs and incentives to reduce the loss of farmlands, open space, and working forests to development, but again eliminates the reference to the one hundred thousand acres.
Questions or comments about amendment thirteen? Councilmember Hitchen?
Thank you, Chair. I just, I think this actually may be more for Ms. Long. I know, and I don't have it in front of me, but I know that we had an amendment on the table about this segment of language. How, so if that one passes, are we building on it with this one? Or I'm just trying to figure out, because I feel like we have one yesterday. So just want to remind me, we don't do this very often. It's budget time and comprehensive planning, it seems. We get into amending.
Yeah, technically, the second one, so if if it is the exact same section, subsection, or language, one would be an amendment to the amendment and should be done at the same time as you're considering the initial proposed change.
Okay, because I think there's a couple, like, I think short-term rentals are in here. We've got a couple of different ones, so just we'll need to think about that for the meeting today. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll circle around with legal on this, but the way the staff would be looking at it, just kind of on its face is if there's an amendment this afternoon that replaces, that's how I would look at it, was, you know, you're basically replacing what was done at the committee. So in the short-term rental world, there was a proposal from the executive, there was a change to that proposal at committee. If the council today decides to change that, that is the that is the final language that that I would consider to be the body's directive to be included in the resolution, but I'll circle up with legal to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions about amendment thirteen? Amendment fourteen.
Thank you. Amendment number fourteen concerns the proposed county water utility that's been discussed. And the amendment would request that the identification and analysis of all policy elements that would be necessary in the formation of that water utility be identified as part of the preferred alternative.
Questions here? Councilmember Monroe?
I'm just kind of curious, Mr. Kruger, if we choose not to form a county water utility, then this doesn't apply or does apply?
It would, information would be returned to council, so if this amendment passes, staff will complete its environmental analysis based upon the assumption that there may be a water utility that's created, and what are the environmental impacts related to that new water utility in the county, and they would come forward with a proposal kind of embedded in the comprehensive plan and the capital facilities plan with that assumption in mind, and then council can do with it as it wishes in the fall. There's no obligation to adopt a county water utility because now you've received all the information, right? So now you have information that you can use to make a decision, but you can say, you know what, we don't think we want to get in the business of of being a water utility.
Okay, but if we, let's reverse that and say we decide January first, two thousand and twenty-five, or let's just say December twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, to go with the water utility. Would it have been better to embed an analysis now than later?
Yes, I think so. I think the sooner you can get the information together and make a decision and include it as part of your periodic update and embed that policy direction into your comprehensive plan, you know, that's that's a good thing. But if you don't do that, either because you don't have it evaluated now, you remove this from the preferred alternative, and you say something to the effect, you know, we don't think we want to go down that road now, and so that there is no environmental analysis, there is no proposal embedded into the comp plan, there is no supporting information in the C F P, and then you decide in December, guess what, council staff, we decided we want to go ahead and move forward with this. We're going to be able to pull it together, but it's going to be difficult to do, right? It'll be difficult for your council staff to pull that together at the eleventh hour if you were to wait until two thousand and twenty-five and then explore the issue kind of with fresh eyes, asking for more information, maybe adopt a resolution, requesting the department bring back to you all of what Councilwoman Kruger is asking for now. You can certainly do that and then make a decision in two thousand and twenty-five.
Okay, but this this would just be a little bit of preemptive work prior to.
Yeah, I mean, I think the councilwoman can speak to her intent, but that's my understanding, is that she wants to learn more about what this would entail, what would be part of this if the county decides to explore a water utility.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Like so much of what we're doing today, we are gathering data and studying so that we can make informed decisions later. We are not making final decisions on anything today. Councilmember Hitchen?
Thank you, Chair, and I'm going to call in Mr. Taylor just to refresh our memory. We had asked a variety of questions when the during the budget cycle about a water utility. Department have done a great deal of work on this. I think I even have a glossy portfolio of all the different things. So I'm just, I guess I'm just wanting to clarify. I feel like we said, hey, go answer all of these questions as part of the, I think it was a proviso, so maybe not a proviso, but.
So, thank you. There is a requirement in the the trailer to the budget ordinance that requires the department to produce a business case analysis related to the formation of a water utility. The department has started providing that information through the Economic and Infrastructure Development Committee. There was a meeting earlier this year on that subject. I anticipate that the executive will be forwarding up a proposed code change to establish the water utility before the comprehensive plan is considered for adoption. There are also expected to have additional business case information presented to council later this summer so that the council will have an opportunity to make a decision on the formation of a water utility this year before the periodic update is approved. The formation of the water utility is not dependent upon this comprehensive plan action. It would be useful for the council and the public to have policies ultimately in the comprehensive plan that speak to the water utility and what you're seeking to accomplish in terms of policy outcomes. But a lot of that will be debated this summer, and the council will could make a decision this summer before this periodic update is acted upon.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Councilmember Kruger?
Thank you, Chair. I was looking at this as a procedure for transparency on this. I just recall when the idea of putting in a water utility that, you know, what does that entail? And so I started doing research on it, and in different spots of the country, there are different things that are done. And I just thought it would be good for us to kind of know, oh, we might be looking at increasing buffers along water areas for the water that it was in the Midwest where that was happening, and and here there's a lot of water. I don't know how they would go about doing all of this, and it just seems to, you know, what are elements that go into creating a water utility that general public may not think about, but having knowledge and the transparency of what could happen, it gives them time to research. Though, you know, maybe it would just be in conjunction with all of the other research that is being done, not intended to be a big lift.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chair, I want to make sure we really understand the the direction, if this amendment were adopted or not adopted, based on the direction we gave in our budget, is this is this language in this amendment going to get us something that we need to make a decision later this year?
What I would anticipate is that what is included in the F E I S documentation as a result of this language that's in amendment number fourteen, it would look similar to information that you had received earlier in the year in response to the requirement in the existing budget trailer. May not be exactly the same. There may be some additional policy statements, but I wouldn't expect that it would be substantially different.
Thank you. Amendment fifteen.
Thank you, Chair. So amendment number fifteen concerns Canyon Road. For those of you that are on Community Development and Environment Committee, you'll recall that Councilmember Morel's amendment took that Northern Canyon Road project and separated it into phases with Milroy Bridge and additional property acquisition being phase one with the additional work and scope of the project being continued but not included in the T I P. So that was the Morel Amendment Eight that was adopted. Fifteen would supersede that, in my view, because what what fifteen is saying is go with alternative two, which was just complete Canyon Road, northerly extension, period, just very simply stating, we're going to do the project, it will not be broken into phases. So that's what fifteen would do.
Let me be really clear, Morel Amendment Eight is up for consideration today.
Oh, right, but it came out of committee embedded in the proposal.
Okay, just want to make sure everyone's following.
Nothing's been adopted.
We're considering Morel Amendment.
Come on, don't rain on my parade here.
Councilmember Hitchen?
Thank you, Chair. I just, as I read this, it says, complete the Canyon Road project underline. And then up here, it's the northerly extension Canyon Road has things in our transportation improvement plan at both ends. So when I read complete the Canyon Road project, I think we are stating in this amendment from two hundred and fourth or two hundred and eighth to the port of Tacoma.
Right.
Right? So is that when we say complete Canyon Road, is that what this amendment is saying?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have, never mind.
And just to add on to that, the introductory language to the amendment talks about that. It describes the project as a Canyon Road regional connector, which includes Canyon Road northerly extension, the bridge, the rest of the Canyon Road corridor. It's the entirety of the corridor.
Great crossing.
Correct. That's right. It's the entirety of the corridor. The language that's in this amendment in the table is just reinserting the language that the executive had proposed in the transmittal to the council originally. So it's just reinserting that language that had been struck through a prior amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Monroe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since Councilmember Campbell is not here, spent a lot of time discussing this particular corridor with with him. I agree that his wanting to get the Milroy Bridge complete is is not flawed. It's just the sequencing that is a challenge. Anytime you try to isolate a certain portion, it gets challenging for funding for that, and then the size of which the bridge is designed for is designed for a freight corridor. And so if we just wanted to replace the Milroy Bridge, we could downsize it considerably if it was just for residential traffic use, occasional semi. But I I agree with Councilmember Campbell that you can build the corridor, have it stop at River Road, and then wait for a bridge to show up. So when staff talks about this day, hopefully staff will talk about it, I would like for them to explain why it it's not either or, that it needs to be a complete corridor, and grants will flow better than as a standalone. So I'm just kind of curious, and, you know, I support Councilmember Campbell and his effort to represent his district. There again, this is looked at countywide for an economic development corridor, and I'll keep that in mind. But like I say, this is a issue that Councilmember Campbell has thoughtfully processed and trying to get the best for his his district. I understand that. So let's just see where this goes, and I am, just for council, and I am, and Councilmember Hitchen said it, I'm I'm thinking of pulling some of my amendments, so I will let you know which ones those might be. I wanted to look at these first and see where they were at, but thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Monroe. A lot of discussion happening about Canyon, and I'm truly grateful for it. It's a huge, huge financial huge financial decision for the county. The corridor's a $400 million plus corridor. We don't, none of us take that. All of us take that very seriously. That's a lot of money. And and you're exactly right, Councilor Morel, the they are dependent on each other. And we know mega, this is a mega project. For us, it's a mega project. Any mega project is sequenced these days. It just has to be fit for affordability. I mean, I five is sequenced, like every mega project is sequenced. We don't have, we don't have the money to do it in all one false swoop. The project continues to not be prioritized highly in any federal grants. The state refuses to prioritize it. They have much higher priorities elsewhere in the system. So the bill keeps landing on the on our local lap. And I just and I know you, I know you understand this, Councilor Morel, and you said it, like the realities are, we have to figure out how to sequence these mega projects. There's just not enough money to do this and the countless other things we're trying to do in our transportation system. So these are really hard decisions with financial realities and many competing needs that are in front of us. Mr. Kruger, anything further?
No, sir.
Any other questions by council about today's agenda or amendments? Yes, thank you for the map on one of the amendments that were briefed yesterday helps everyone, all of us visual learners, see what we're talking about. Mr. Kruger, you've worked very hard to support the council in its deliberations. Thank you for your very, very good work.
Yeah, that's right.
We are at item number three, external boards and commissions updates. Mr. Taylor, to begin the discussion, please.
So, Mr. Chair, I actually don't have any items to report on for PSRC this week. It's a quiet week at PSRC. Nothing to report on.
And Mr. Taylor, PCRC is Thursday evening.
Correct.
Is there anything to report on that? Or do you need time to?
I can pull up the agenda.
There's no decisions to be made. They're all three things, my recollection.
Correct. It's a regular.
I will not be there this Thursday. I know Evan in my office is coordinating the appropriate alternate. I will be at State Association, State Association of Counties Legislative Steering Committee Retreat later this week. So that's why I can't make that. Speaking of, I'll be back up to Councilmember Hitchens, our board member to State Association of Counties. She's our primary board member. I'm hitching along because I'm staying for the Legislative Steering Committee Retreat. But there's so many important conversations at WASAC with litigation and membership that I wanted to join Councilmember Hitchens together on that and listen in as well. And then, as I said, stay for the Legislative Steering Committee Retreat. We're in the early stages of forming our state legislative agenda for next year. Mr. Taylor, I bought you enough time to.
Thank you so much.
Peek at the PCRC.
So there are a number of presentations at PCRC. There aren't any action items other than approval of the minutes. But several of these items are of interest, will be of interest to members. The first is a report out on the point in time survey. And I know the council has a briefing lined up for that as well. Implementation of the comprehensive plan in homelessness. Again, the council's already had briefings on that and continue to have briefings on that same subject. Hospital capacity as well. And then briefing on the opioid status. All of these are items lined up for council briefings as well. So sneak peek of perhaps what you'll receive in your council briefings.
Can you double check that the point in time count?
I'll verify.
I was told it had to get off of our agenda because the department wasn't.
I, yes, I was, I'm aware of that as well. So I will verify that it's still on the agenda. But it is reported as being on the agenda for PCRC.
Awesome.
Other updates about boards and commissions, Councilor Morel?
Thank you. Just want to make sure everyone who can, General Assembly is the 30th of this month. And unfortunately, I will not be there. But there may be a special announcement that happens during that event. Maybe.
The suspense.
What?
You guys are gonna have to wait a little while here.
Good suspense buildup, Councilor Morel. Councilor Dickinson?
Thank you, Chair. Last week, I went up to Squim to the Ecosystem Recovery Board meeting and kind of similar to some of the discussions we had earlier in EIDC, we talked a lot about culvert replacement, fish burial projects, burial barrier projects. We talked about land conservation and some of the work that some of the land trusts are doing. It was fascinating with all sorts of data to really look at where the important land is to conserve in regards to climate change, sea level rise, development. It was, it was really, really interesting. And I'm sure our Department of Sustainability is looking at some of the similar data as they work on our land conservation plan. We toured a floodplain reworking of the river, the Dungeness River, back to kind of its natural flow. And they talked about the pros and cons, well, really just the pros of that and the benefits to managing, you know, flooding and into the natural ecosystem. So it was really interesting. If anybody would like more information, I'm happy to share. And just a beautiful area up there at the Dungeness, I forget the name of it, Dungeness River Nature Center. It was just gorgeous. Thank you.
Awesome. Councilor Hitchens?
Thank you, Chair. A couple of things. Crystal Johnson met on Monday and had a good conversation about some of the work that's going on and continue to kind of look at how we can do more partnerships and work together with other agencies that are also doing domestic violence work in our county and stronger partnerships with Tacoma and kind of working together. Secondly, just a Blue Zones update. As we invested in this, the Blue Zones National Team is in town, was in town, and performed walking audits and driving audits in Parkland and Spanaway this weekend. DOT was there, our team was there from Planning and Public Works, and then Parks and the Health Department, along with community members, to participate in this walking audit and driving audit. And then they met over the weekend to really go like, what are some policy recommendations? They went over those yesterday. I have, I was not able to attend because I was in a meeting here. But looking forward to getting the report back on that. So they're continuing to kind of think about how we can improve the ability to move, help move freely in Parkland and Spanaway in a way that makes sense. So we'll see what kinds of recommendations come back from that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Morel?
Thank you. On a different subject matter, I have the privilege of attending a graduation of Bonnie Lake's Community Court program. And it's nice to see the smaller jurisdictions that have alternative routes to justice through these community court. And they had about, I don't know, 15 graduates. Some with sobriety of over 300 days, which is great. I enjoyed listening to their testimonies of how it's changed trajectory of their life and their family. And they're still digging out from a lot of the consequences, but they at least are on solid ground and moving forward. Appreciate Bonnie Lake's work on this community court. They're operating off a grant which will expire in a year. And so that's about how long they have right now to maintain their community court program. So at some point in time, I have to figure out a way to keep these small jurisdictions courts going.
Figure out how to keep our own courts going.
It's really, that's really exciting. That's really great to hear. Glad you got to do that. I mentioned earlier that I'll be attending the Legislative Steering Committee two day retreat later this week. The goal is to begin setting the legislative agenda, the high level, so that staff and stakeholders can continue to work on more detail through the summer and come back with more fleshed out proposals for the board's consideration at the State Association of Counties. I fully anticipate conversations around the cost of public defense to be major items. The revenues for counties to deliver core services like public safety to be a major discussion item. And we're trying something new this year. Maybe it's a blast from the past, as I understand it. But we're moving back to a model where we're developing an agenda that allowing large urban counties to develop priorities that are most significant to them, more rural counties to do the same, so that the different size counties with their different needs and challenges aren't competing with each other, but that we're able to advance priorities for for the diversity of the state. So we're doing something a little different this year. We'll see how it goes and I'll certainly report back. I'm sure there'll be many, many other topics, but I know that the cost of public defense is going to be a really significant one. And I think that's going to be across the board, not just large urban counties. So we'll report back. The Pierce Transit Board of Commissioners met last evening. Vice Chair Campbell and I participated. And it was nothing out of the ordinary in the the board meeting, lots of normal business at the agency. And I'll forward the annual report, the 2023 annual report from Pierce Transit. I'll put it in everybody's inboxes. That just is hot off the presses. Item number four, chair's topics. I don't have anything further today. We're at item number five, other business. Mr. Dominique, for Communication Manager and Public Information Updates?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Members of the council, for the record, Brian Dominique, Communications Manager for the Office of the Council. I just have one quick update. Yesterday, we talked about the application for the Roy City Council. I was able to make that a fillable application. So they can go online, don't have to print anything out. And so a little bit cleaner process. We sent the news release out just before study session to the Niskuale Valley News, the News Tribune, Suburban Times. So they have it. We should see it published and then Niskuale Valley News on Friday. I'll follow up to make sure that happens. And then we're just going to move forward with what we had discussed yesterday in terms of getting the word out about it. So just wanted to follow up on that with the council. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Dominique?
You're going to send everything Pony Express?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Dominique. At the end of the study session packet, there is a proclamation for review. It includes May 2024 as transit month in Pierce County, Washington. Is there any other business by council members? Councilmember Hitchens, Mr. Taylor, Ms. Long, any other business for council and study session?
No further business, Mr. Chair.
So you know the business before the Pierce County Council in Tuesday study session? We are adjourned.